Call to order by standing in the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Councilmember Brecher.
Here.
Councilmember Coyle.
Here.
Councilmember Deal.
Here.
Councilmember Gomez.
Here.
Councilmember Joshi.
Present.
Councilmember Patel.
Here.
Council President Ship Freeman.
Here.
Adequate notice of this meeting is required by the Open Public Meeting Act of 1975 has been provided by an annual notice sent to the Home News Tribune, the Star Legend, Sentinel, and the News India Times on December 13, 2019, and Post-Maine Lobby Municipal Complex on that same date. Thank you. I just want to make everybody aware there's a couple of people here that's starting off the year with a good relationship with the Education, but the Board of Ed -- I mean, not the Board, but the actual members of Edison. We have Dr. Bernard Bregan Jr., and we also have Gail Palatowski here. All right. Today, everybody in here, is Joe Coyle's birthday, so.
Happy birthday.
I would like everybody to know that January 20, the township offices will be closed in observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Day. And on Saturday, January 25, is the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s celebration at Mini Beville Community Center at 1:00 p.m. And I don't have the referendum in front of me or anything, but I know that March 10, 2020, is the new set date to vote on it. All right? Thank you. Now, we have the administrative agenda from the mayor.
I need a motion to accept.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Moving right along. You've got to read the ordinance.
Yep.
All right, New Business.
Ordinance number 2062.
Yeah. New Business, oh, two, 2062, 2020. Go ahead.
An ordinance authorizing the acquisition of Eastmans for the Brotherhood Street Improvement Project on properties identified on the tax maps of the township of Edison as Block 20A, Lot 4, Block 20A, Lot 5, Block 20A, Lot 6, Block 20A, Lot 57, Block 20B, Lot 1A, Block 20B, Lot 2A, and on the tax map of the Scataway Township as Block 8802, Lot 3.02 by exercising of the power of endement domain.
Can I say further? Any motion to introduce?
Council President.
Yes.
I move this ordinance to be passed on first reading published according to law for further consideration in public hearing set down for Wednesday, January 22, 2020.
Roll call. Councilmember Brecher.
Yes.
Councilmember Coyle.
Yes.
Councilmember Deal.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez.
Yes.
Councilmember Joshi.
Yes.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Council President Ship Freeman.
Yes.
Right now, we're opening a public comment on the resolutions. On resolutions only. Yeah.
That you just read?
No, resolutions only.
Resolutions, things that are numbered on the agenda?
Oh, not 0262.
No.
We finished that already. There was no hearing on that.
All right.
Move to close the public portion?
Second.
All right.
Council President?
Yes.
Can I ask for a couple items to be voted on separately?
Yeah, we're not there yet, but we have to close the public portion.
Oh, I thought we did the public portion.
Yeah.
Okay. It's been made in second. All in favor?
All in favor. Close the public portion.
Aye.
Aye. All right, have it. Now, what would you like to vote?
R-22, R-26, and R-32.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
R-26.
R-26.
And R-32.
And R-32. Anyone else? The motion to approve without the, without 3, without 022, 026, and 032.
So moved.
Second.
Councilmember Brecher.
Yes.
Councilmember Coyle.
Yes.
Councilmember Deal.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez.
Yes.
Councilmember Joshi.
Yes.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Council President Ship Freeman.
Yes.
Now, we pull these out separately.
Yep.
All right. Do we have a discussion on?
Yeah. Discussion on 22.
Okay. Discussion on 22?
Council President?
Yes.
Yes, I just, I guess I spoke to the administration about maybe, because I know that we're in difficult times this year with our budget, and I was hoping that we could look at repricing some of the vendors that we have, just to see if we can save money. I don't know that you would save a lot. I spoke to the administration, you know, you're talking about half a percent or a percent that you'd probably save overall, but being that we're in this difficult time, we don't have a budget yet, I think we should start to look at that before we start approving vendors moving forward, that we get, you know, two, three bids in it.
All right, any other discussion?
I need a motion.
Yeah. A motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Brecher.
No.
Councilmember Coyle.
Yes.
Councilmember Deal.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez.
Yes.
Councilmember Joshi.
Yes.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Council President Ship Freeman.
Yes.
26.
Council President?
Yes.
Yes, we discussed this the other day about having the resumes, so, you know, and I heard everybody's assertion that we looked at the resume to see that it was qualified, that she was qualified. And I know we said she had a master's, and looking through the resume, I didn't see a master's listed in the resume. But then what I did was I did a little bit more research there, just to look at maybe other people that applied. And we did have a very qualified applicant, doesn't happen to be at our meeting here, but he's very vocal in our town, and he also has a lot of audiovisual and technical skills that, in my mind, would really help benefit the library. So I'd like the mayor maybe to reconsider that. But then, in doing a little further research, there was a person that applied, and this person happened to have graduated from Harvard and has a master's from Drexel University School of Libraries. They were the library director from 1985 to 1993 in South Amboy, and then 1993 to 2000 in Raway as the library director, and then a library director in Roselle from 2000 to 2010. And then, from 2010 to 2018, they were the Somerset County System Bridgewater Assistant Director, Director of Public Services. And when I seen this one here, I'm, you know, it just kind of stood out to me that if there's anybody that should, I don't, sit on the library board, this person is probably the most qualified and is an Edison resident here. So I'd like to.
The other person is, excuse me, sir, the other person is an Edison resident, and it's only a one-year term.
Madam President, I know, but just let me finish. They're both Edison residents, I get it, but one has no library experience whatsoever. The other was born and bred in the library and has a master's in the library and has served as directors for all these. When we talk about hiring the best in Edison, and only the best, I learned that from the Board of Education. And I'd like to take that and bring that here to the municipal side, where what we're looking for is the very best. And as Sam Joshi and yourself know, the library has had issues. So I believe the issues are because of politics that have been playing in there. And this person here, I don't know who they are from Adam, to be quite honest with you, but they're so well-qualified, I don't know how this person was never even considered. And I'd ask my council colleagues to, you know, vote no on the appointment only because of this discrepancy that I found here until we get answers from the mayor on this. And that's what I'm asking for, that's why I asked it to be pulled, because I'd like to see us start hiring qualified people in Edison, people that know about the things we're doing. And I'd like to see people's involvement. I know that, I heard my councilman Joshi at one time talk about committee people. I love the involvement of committee people. Committee people, whether you're Democrat or Republican or independent committee people, I don't care, you're people that are involved in our community, and I love that. So I'm looking for people from Edison, I want people from Edison, but I also want qualified people. So if I could have someone that has an engineering degree, you know, sit on some kind of construction thing, that's what I'm looking for. And here, obviously, and maybe it got lost, and maybe the mayor never got to look at this one, I don't know, but we haven't had the time to ask him about it. So I'd ask everybody to vote, vote no on it if at all possible. Thank you.
Council President, just a question. To Council President to Maureen, was this resume that Councilman Brecher referring was vetted out as a part of?
The mayor decides that, yes, he had everybody's resumes, but I know that one came much later after, after he had selected the first one. It came later, the one Mr. Brecher's referring to.
So was that before Monday's meeting, or it came after Monday's meeting?
No, 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 it was before.
It was before, so it was well in time.
I don't know exactly, but I know that, you know, we work on this at least, you know, 30 to 40 days before the reorg meeting, you know, we try to get, go through everything. I'm not sure if it was there then.
Okay, so as long as mayor had it and if he had looked at it.
Yeah, he saw them all.
Because it is his recommendation, so that's the reason I'm asking.
Okay.
Council President, if I, if, I'm not involved in the library board, but if I, I wouldn't mind hearing from Councilman Joshi, I know he's involved, and I apologize for not being fully briefed on each person, but if he wants to chime in, I certainly yield to your experience.
Councilman, as you know, I've been involved in the Library Board of Trustees for two years now. I brought to light some significant issues that the Library Board had, and I'm happy with the recommendation that the mayor has made right now.
Okay, vote for approval? Roll call.
Any motion?
I'm sorry, we need a motion.
Motion to, vote for 26.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmember Brecher.
I'm sorry, I was just stunned. No.
Councilmember Coyle.
Yes.
Councilmember Deal.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez.
Yes.
Councilmember Joshi.
Yes.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Council President Ship Freeman.
Yes.
All right, number 32? Discussion on number 32?
Yes, number 32, I had questions with the administration on what we paid the engineering company and what we were kind of getting. And, you know, I guess in the past, on an average, we've been paying them $40,000 a year or something like that, or maybe $50,000 a year. And then during the whole sewer thing, it looks like we've been paying them, you know, like $100,000 or more per year. And I guess that was to do the studies and everything else that we had. Currently, now, we have somebody that's watching over our water and that, and I do understand that he will need some guidance. I just don't understand the need to have the $150,000 when we didn't need that before.
And just, just to be clear, the sewer part of it is 100, it's the water that's 150.
Okay. So it's, the water.
It's about the average of every year. If you look at the last five years, it was about 100.
Right.
And that's an amount not to exceed?
Right, that's because of the last two years.
Correct.
Because the last two years, we had excessive need because he was doing an investigation. So his investigation has been done, he's looked at our system, he's done his report, I just don't know why we need to continue for that dollar amount after we received all the report and guidance at this point. So it's something I'd like to look into, and like I said, it all goes back to, I see a large tax increase on the horizon, just due to circumstances of contracts and stuff that have been negotiated. So with that in mind, I also want to see our infrastructure invested in. And if this is part of that investment, I'd just like to see exactly what we're doing, and the dollar amount just seemed excessive, so I was, you know, looking to see if we could have that reduced. Thank you.
Okay.
Council President? I just want to comment, I know I referred to the administrator in regards to spending on this particular department. The only thing today, I'm fine with voting yes on this, my problem is I just want more clarification of the spending, because I may have been confused the last meeting, and again, this is put on my lap on Friday to vote on Wednesday, and although that seems okay for the administration, but it doesn't give the council enough time to look at whether or not we're spending taxpayers' money wisely. And the determination I make is that, I know, I believe Mazer got another contract to do our water quality management. Was there an additional contract we gave to Mazer for water?
Mazer doesn't do any work for us with water, only Mott.
I, you know, I'm reluctant to have to dig through my paperwork, but I am certain that we hired another firm over the summer between, it was right after the refer, it was right after the referendum or before it. And I believe Councilman Joshi asked why we were hiring some before the actual referendum was passed. Point of order is, yes, I just want to clarify the spending, and if I can get records on what we're spending. Mr. Brecher made a good point, Mott McDonald did an entire study of a useful life of our water and sewer, whereas they compiled reports that were probably about 10 inches thick, two books of the entire water and sewer system. I met with the engineer personally, that study was paid for. So although I, you know, will see some reasons why we need them if we're going to dig in the road, and I'm assuming that we need them to determine the repair and have an engineer on site for the future repairs moving forward, I just want to get a breakdown, it doesn't have to happen today, of what their spending is in these departments and what their fees have been, so that I understand where we're going. Because the last contract that I'm bringing to your attention, we're confused on, which I'm fine with, I just, I see 200,000 there, 200,000 here, and I just want to make sure that we're making good progress and we're not having any wasteful spending. I hope people understand that, listening. Thank you, Council President.
Need more discussion?
One question, Council President.
Yes.
To the administration, I received an email, I think it was today, I'm trying to find it now, but it basically gave a description of what the engineer was going to do. I can't seem to find that email right here.
I hope Councilwoman.
Oh, you do? In there, okay, let me find the line. The line said something about continuing a study.
Under water or sewer?
Let's see.
Water or sewer, there's two.
Let's see. Let's see. Is it water or sewer? Let's see. 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 Let's see.
Council President, can I interrupt while he's reading?
Yes.
May? And then I just want to clarify that the Mott McDonald did the entire study for water and sewer, for the Capex investment of the $851 million we were going to borrow for 40 years. So previous to this, they have determined a study to be the experts to tell us what we needed to fix and what was critical to fix first. So if there's anybody who knows about this department, it's definitely Mott McDonald. And if there's anybody that has past experience in their file, it's Mott McDonald. I just get confused on how I have to vote on something I'm given on Friday, you know, by Wednesday, and figure out their action and how this money's spent. Because at the end of the day, it's still more of our money being spent. And I just want to make sure that you understand, listening, the clarification and detail of the direction I'm trying to bring to your attention. And that's where I see where I have the confusion, because they did a huge study, again, the book was 10 inches thick. I probably can tell you I was one of the few who read it, okay, and which is challenging, and I met with them, I spent a lot of time with them. So I just don't know what more they're doing moving forward when they already have a pre-existing history. So I just don't want to overlap on our expenses, Council President, to the administration. Thank you.
Council Pres, go ahead.
Yes.
Just, the one distinction that I wanted to make is, correct, the study was done, but now, in three months, we had to form a water utility, and now we have a water utility in place that we need to run, and we certainly shouldn't do it without an engineer. And I think, Councilman Coyle, you made a good point, these are the people that did the study, the initial study, and this is the people that should help us and will probably understand, and the learning curve will be significantly faster than someone else starting from the beginning. Also, the distinction, and this is an amount not to exceed, and the intention is to manage to that. It's not just throwing dollars out the door, which is a valid point. We want to understand everything that is being done, and at the same time, there's managing the relationship, managing the vendor, and then managing the direction that we're going in. This is a new territory for us. We haven't managed a water company in over 22 years. So it's certainly prudent that we have the engineer on board as quickly as we can. And then, obviously, we can manage to the dollars, you know, in an amount not to exceed. So.
Thank you.
Council President, just want to mention that, even though it says, and thank you, Councilman Gomez, it's not to exceed 250,000, 100 plus 150, but just remember that every month, we will get the bills and appropriations. So we will be able to look at what work has been done, and accordingly, you can vote yes or no to approve that. So it's not set in stone that, you know, we are giving them 250,000 right day one. So we'll have a chance to look at that.
Correct.
Any more discussion?
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? All right. Motion for approval?
I move to approve.
Have a second.
R-32.
Second that.
Councilmember Brecher.
Yes.
Councilmember Coyle.
Yes.
Councilmember Deal.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomez.
Yes.
Councilmember Joshi.
Yes.
Councilmember Patel.
Yes.
Council President Ship Freeman.
Yes.
All right, now, we would like to open up the floor for oral petition.
From the list first.
Yeah, from the list. I'm making sure I say your name correctly, is Samora Kuntz?
Hush? That's how you say it?
Oh, somebody just wrote that name? Okay. Maria Orchid.
Hi, thank you, Maria Orchid, 83 Jefferson Avenue. First, I'd like to say congratulations to all the newly appointed council people, and of course, congratulations President Joyce. Unfortunately, we had to cancel the Clara Barton Neighborhood Block, oh, sorry, Clara Barton Neighborhood Preservation Committee meeting scheduled for tomorrow. Sorry for short notice. We're going to postpone it. We're currently working with the police department to schedule a new block watch sometime this January, so please look out for invitations to that. There are a few meetings that conflict between the council and the Board of Ed, so I hope that maybe you can work together to move. It's kind of difficult to make both meetings at the same night. My other question is, when will the official listing be updated on the website? Sometimes it has like old dates on there and.
You mean the official list?
Yeah. Does some of them still show 2018, 2019, 2020, 2021?
We'll be updating our end on, by Friday.
Okay, thank you, and thank you so much.
Thank you. Anthony DiAmorin.
Anthony DiAmorin, 15 Road X Circle. First off, I just wanted to say, I'm happy to see the superintendent here tonight, this evening, I think that's a good sign, so thank you for coming. Two things I just want to bring up real fast. First, taxes. I had the, as I went through my daily walk in my neighborhood, it's therapeutic, but I realized that eight homes were for sale on my walk. And out of the eight, five were senior citizens own the home, and two are about to close, and they're closing to young families, Council President. Young families with children, which is obviously going to add to the overcrowding problem. And where I live specifically, the schools in the area are massively overcrowded, Lincoln specifically, Lincoln School. But with all the building that's going on in town, taxes, in my opinion, I'm no tax expert, should be coming down, should not be on the rise. I live ground zero for all the development that's going on. I live right behind Costco, so you have all that, plus what's going on with the old four plan is. And I just can't understand why taxes aren't on the rise. You talk to these senior citizens, the reason why they're leaving and selling is because of taxes. And that's a shame that we're pushing, in a sense, pricing them out of our township, where they've been paying into the system all this time. And I'd really like a better explanation, not today, but going forward, to why this, why we continue to have, see tax increases when, the way it's supposed to work, these companies come in, they put into the system, it's supposed to, you know, drop taxes. I think that's the way I was taught in school, but I'm no tax expert, but I wanted to address that issue. Second, last week, we unfortunately had a tragic accident on Route 27, Council President, and it's really unfortunate, right outside Luke Oil. I can't help but think that this may happen again. Again, with all the new construction that's going on, all the new warehousing, I'm concerned that we're going to see more tragedies like this possibly on the rise, and it's just a matter of time. I, a couple months ago, about six months ago, I came to these council chambers, and I asked the council to consider a walk and bike path on a little strip on Whitman Avenue leading up to the dog park. It's a very dangerous walk, especially if you're coming from like where I live, and people want to use that dog park. You can't walk over the conrail tracks, the bend that comes around from Matutian Pool, it's very dangerous. And I think that's something we should consider, there's a warehouse that's going right on Whitman Avenue, being built as we speak. I'm sure that trucks can't go onto the bridge because of the weight, but we're, it's only, I'm sure that there's going to be trucks that make the wrong turn, they're going to have to turn around. It's a dangerous trek, especially in the summertime, when people use Matutian Pool. So I'm going to ask again if something could be considered through the township, they could look into a strip, it's about 150 yards, I can't imagine it being that much, but just, we need to do more, I think, especially with all the construction in that area, and all the industry, all the buildings, to alleviate from some of the possible accidents going forward. So thank you very much, Council President.
Anthony.
Yes.
Just before you leave there, Matutian wants to go with us on a pedestrian study about what you're, about the actual thing that you're talking about? They want to band in with us, do a pedestrian study, and they want to see about, you know, how the dangerous places and every place that make people more aware of the pedestrians. So that's, it's in the background, it's in the works, so.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Council President.
Council President?
Yes.
Just a comment. I just, I just wanted to say that on the tax issue, 110% with you. I plan on, you know, looking at, like I said, our hospital, our hotels we have, our warehouses, just in general, to go through. We spoke to the administration on some of these things, and I think they're going to give us the support we need to make sure that these things happen.
Right.
And as far as sidewalks, I guess.
I just, I just wanted to say that on the tax issue, 110% with you. I plan on, you know, looking at, like I said, our hospital, our hotels we have, our warehouses, just in general to go through. We spoke to the administration on some of these things, and I think they're going to give us the support we need to make sure that these things happen.
Right.
And as far as sidewalks, I guess this is a question to the administration. I know that the, we had a liaison with the Board Education, and we talked about some sidewalks on Talmage going down to Woodbrook, because the students have to walk on the opposite side of the street and then cross over that Talmage, which is, it's basically a dangerous type thing. Because I think sidewalks are missing in a place where there's woods. And I know Lenny said he was going to work on that, and I was wondering about that one. And then, I believe there's some new complex being built over by Kilmer, that the students are going to have to walk on Sutton's Lane, because there's no sidewalks on that street there, and they're going to be elementary school. So we talked about doing something there. Maybe you can just, you know, give me a follow-up on that next week or so.
Rich, just one other thing too, is Boulevard of Eagles, I think we spoke about it before, I was telling you, that when, at night, since it gets...
A light.
Yeah, so when you are leaving, if you're a student leaving Edison High School, and you're walking to the parking lot and it's dark, unfortunately, cars don't drive down 25, going 25 down Boulevard of Eagles, they go faster. And if you're in your car, if you ever drive down that street at night, it's happened to me a couple of times where, you know, you realize late that the student is walking across the street, so maybe lights on, coming up from the ground, like a blinking light. Yeah, or a light on the street itself in general would be sufficient enough. But as far as tax reform, I would support that. Obviously, we need tax reform really badly, so, thank you.
Counsel President, I just want to make a comment, not that while he's down, but I would agree as well. I mean, I'm surprised, with all the infrastructure we do have, it's a great point of residence to bring up on how we can't balance our tax base. And I have to say, and I look back at the last 25 years of being here, this has been a part-time council forever, it's been a part-time mayor forever. It switched to a full-time at one time, then back to part-time. This is a lot of work to run this town. I mean, you can make a full-time job out of public safety alone as an elected official. And I think this is important, that we look at other ways that we can have more staff to critically assess our spending. And that's what fires me up over and over when we're spending money. When I get a budget, when I get a packet on Friday, and I got to vote on it on Wednesday, it's challenging, it's a lot to read. And I challenge my council colleagues, I'm not here to cause, you know, issues of us disagreeing, it's just, it's just practical, it's logical. How can you read this, get this on Friday, and be ready by Wednesday, and have a full determination of spending money? So I understand when you come here and say that. We take on, you know, Amazon, who's not a friend to the community. They made a mess at the corner of Vineyard. They have more trucks there than they should. They're overparking more than they should. And they give us a million dollars in taxes, and still, there's no way we balance our budget. So it's open to, you know, take a deep dive and look at the scope of this. So I understand the pain the seniors have in staying here, and how to see where things will be balanced, but I am certain this council will push harder this year to determine how we can do some more cost saving. Thank you, Counsel President. You're welcome. Karen Halo.
Hi, everybody, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Welcome to the new members.
Thank you.
First off, I had one thing, resolution 0301, 012020. Didn't Bay Shore Recycling just go up in flames like three weeks ago? Is Bay Shore Recycling actually still in business?
Yes. It's still operational.
It's a large complex they have, they had one building that went on fire.
Yeah, because that was like a hell of a fire. Okay, so I'm talking to the council on more of an emotional standpoint, so bear with me a little bit, I'm going to do the best I can. As Anthony said, I wanted to show you a storyboard. This is my good friend Oscar Znoni, who lost his life last week to a tractor trailer at Luke Oil. So I just wanted you guys to put a face with a really dangerous circumstance that we have in our town by overgrowth and all the decisions that we're making. I've lived here pretty much my whole life. I remember when Oak Tree Road used to have trees, now we should call it formerly Oak Tree Road. Seriously, we really need to think about what we do and how it affects human lives. Tractor trailers and tax ratables, is that all we're good for? I mean, really, what happens to the human life, the value, the family? Let me give you a little backstory on Oscar. He's an amazing guy, or was. He had a brain tumor at the age of nine, an aneurysm that burst, and he had to learn from being paralyzed to walk, talk, feed himself. And his mind was 100%, but he had a little motor coordination, and speech pattern was a little off. He wrote books, he inspired people, he lectured, and he said, you know, if you're having a bad day, get up and keep going. And his life was taken in a half a second. That intersection is a horror show. If you've ever had to, first off, when Mobil used to be there 100 years ago, when I had a car accident, I took my, I worked at Mobil briefly. So I took my bus from Metatchen to that bus stop, which has been a grassy knoll forever. There's no crossing. I was on the way here tonight, trying to even imagine how many warehouse tractor-trailer bays we've just approved for that area, we haven't even seen yet. A lot of people that you know are first generation here, are the warehouse employees. Not everyone can afford a car, not everyone can drive a car. Oscar couldn't drive, he rode his bike, because that was his world. You know, and we, our job as a community is, we didn't take care of him. And, you know, and I appreciate everything that you guys said, with, I know Jonathan Bush is on it, and I really want us to do the right thing. So I'm a solutions person. I started a GoFundMe for Oscar, we got it up to $20,000. It's still on, it went viral in a few days, and I'm really happy to be able to give that back to his survivors. On disability, because he was, you know, there's no money left over, you can hardly just make your meals, so I just wanted to see how I could help his survivor. I went over the other day, after I got my act together, and I took some photographs. And, you know, here's downtown Kennelworth, okay? You know, where maybe 50 people are crossing the street a day. Now we got warehouses and bays, we don't have any crosswalks, there's no marking, there's no time, traffic lights, no, nothing. Do you know how many lives work in Costco, and Walmart, and Amazon, and get off that bus and stand in the grass? In Oscar's case, he had a three-wheel bike, okay? There's no ADA ramps. If anybody remembers, Joe might, I live in Clara Barton. One year, we had these ADA ramps come in, be put in on streets with no sidewalks, and then two weeks later, they were gone. It was the weirdest thing, but we got our street paved. But on major roads, we don't have anything for people. So I'm not here to argue, I just want to tell a story, and I really want you guys to consider it, because where one is, 10 more could be standing behind that, and no family should have to go through that. So I took some pictures of the intersection, I'll leave it, you know, you guys know. But, you know, here's a lovely clear mark crosswalk, okay? All we need to do is put a light and a timer and a crosswalk, and at least it alerts people, like, wow, there might be a human being somewhere in this general facility. And I'll do whatever I can. I mean, reach out, if I can help, if I can do anything, I'm just more than happy. But I'm devastated, and, you know, my town that I love so much has turned into tax ratables, and I don't know, I woke up one day and said, do I live in Edison, or do I live in Carteret? I don't know where I live anymore, it's this warehouse community, and there's no vibe. It's just... So anyway, these are things that I would, you know, beg the council to consider when you make decisions. And thank you for your time, everybody, and Happy New Year, and go home and hug somebody you really love tonight, because they could be gone in a half a second. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want you to also know that I, from Oak Tree Road, I took driving lessons on...
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I want you to know, I know what you're talking about, because I took...
Formerly Oak Tree Road?
Yeah. Well, I took driving lessons from JP, you know, you take the driving lessons on Oak Tree Road. And like you said, with Mr. Bush and stuff, there is going to be a pedestrian study. And we're going to see about the, you know, with the Public Safety Department, everything, about the time, lights, and everything. And we know every life is important to everyone.
Thank you.
Every life that we lose is a, you know, a great person. Thank you.
You know, it's the time walkways, let you know that you have 25 seconds to get across the street like they do in New York. You know those buttons? I think they're just there just to keep us busy until the light actually changes, because I have never actually seen one work. So something that actually works would be great. Also, just taking a little tour, when you go under the bridge, coming from Bridge Street, there's a cable hanging down, people walk around it, they get in the street, then it becomes one narrow foot into the other path, then it becomes nothing. And then there's lights and an intersection, it's just kind of wacky. But I appreciate all your efforts, and I really laud you, and I'm glad you're going to consider everything. Thank you.
You're welcome. John Roach.
Good evening, John Roach, 34 Hamilton Avenue. Just in continuation to her remarks, the bridge that she's referring to, there's a lot of debris. There must have been a big ventilation ductwork sitting there for months, that finally it's down, but just, things are just ignored. But that's just in continuation what she said. What I'd like to talk about is the Amazon garbage still. Their parking lot is still a mess. They just don't care. The residents, not the residents, employees eat lunch in their cars and throws it out the window. I've been talking about this for months, nothing's been done about it. Continuously garbage, and it's flying around everywhere. That jug handle right across the street from Vineyard onto 27, littered with garbage, disgusting. Our whole town is a garbage heap. It's disgusting. I know there's a huge recycling problem going around the whole world. China doesn't want to accept their recyclable zone more. We got to find alternatives. So tonight, I was looking for alternatives. There's a place, Millville Plastics, in Millville, New Jersey. They're trying to accept plastics and going to recycle it. It could be used for insulation, for couches, coats, pillows, stuff like that. I think that's something that we should look into, try to help, and then possibly bring in some revenue, I don't know, into the town. Those are just a couple of things for that. The traffic. One night, I'm coming up Parsonage Road off of Route 1, heading towards JFK. I come up, past the Target, over the hill, some lady comes over, cuts me off. Thankfully, I had good reaction time, no accident. And I proceeded to honk my horn at her to let her know how dangerous her driving was. So she followed me home. I called the cops, I made a report, there's nothing they could really do, but the fact she followed me home, I want it to be known. Is there something we could do? I know it's a county road, but can we talk to the county as far as putting dividers? Because people cut over from the left lane into the right lane, so they could go straight and to continue on Parsonage. Can we ask them to put some dividers in that lane to make, so it's not such a dangerous situation? Is there something we could do for that? Yes, no?
Council President, Engineer and Department will look into that request.
Thank you.
Engineer.
All right. And as far as, what Anthony was saying with the taxes, he's right, there's got to be something done with the taxes. These older homes get knocked down, they're paying average, say, at $7,000 in taxes a year. These new homes, they're getting assessed at $15,000 to $20,000. So I don't understand, with all that increase in new construction, why everybody's taxes are going up. Just something, something we got to look into, because it's just crazy. Too many people are moving out. And then, if we could possibly make an ordinance to increase the size of lots requirements for them to build on. Across the street, there is a lot, it was a decent size, but now there's two homes across the street. Thankfully, they're not huge, they're decent size, so it's not too big of an issue, but all this land getting, is taken up, is taken away from the water, being absorbed. And I know a lot of people complaining about floods all over town. Grove Avenue used to never flood, now all of a sudden it's flooding. So it's just, we got to do something with that also. And I would like to ask the town for a resolution for the Second Amendment sanctuary. It doesn't exclude anybody from following the law, it just allows us to support our Constitution. Everybody's doing it, Virginia's doing it. And I'd ask the town if we could also adopt a resolution saying they support the Second Amendment, and to show the state that we're not going to be ran, be second class, or actually, we're considered third-class citizens now. So, thank you very much, have a good night.
Thank you. Counsel President, just to Mr. Roach, I have to say, you're speaking my language when it comes to a mess, or any corporation that acts like Amazon is right now. I was over there just recently, and I'll be honest, that's the first time I noticed a mess there, and I just recently brought it to the attention of the administration. So I can guarantee someone's going to be over there, and we'll do some follow-up. I was surprised to see all the garbage in and around Amazon on their site. I was surprised, I was going to the bank and coming through there, and it was actually right when the accident happened the other day. So it's sad, and I'm sure they'll clean up their act. They have not been a good neighbor to Edison at all. They claim about their jobs and what they're doing, it's just not something I agree with in how they're acting, how they've taken advantage with all their trucks, and how they overpark. It's just been not good for the residents around there. So I promise you, I'll go out there again, and I'll speak to our administration, but it's recent to me, and it's something I care about. So if you ever want to reach out to or text me, I certainly will bring it to the mayor's attention.
Several town council committees.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I missed that one. Amazon's not my favorite to the community, and I just, they have not been a good neighbor. And when they start, I'll be there to support them. But today, they have double tractor-trailers in parking spots, that they're permitted to only have one tractor-trailer. So instead of having a 75, they have 150. So they're doubling their capacity, and they don't ask for permission, they just do it. So the garbage is definitely not something they should have. Thank you, Counsel President.
Counsel President, I just want to add on to Amazon. Prior to you getting on the council, towards the end of last year, when Alvaro Gomez was president, we agreed that we would restart the Amazon Subcommittee, just to see if there were any follow-up concerns. I know that certain residents had reached out and said that there was an excessive amount of noise, especially in the month of December. So while we're putting the subcommittees together, or committees, if we can restart the Amazon Committee, I know that, I spoke to Chief Ryan today regarding Amazon noise and, you know, what needs to be done, but I think just a little more outreach with that committee would probably go a long way, in terms of if we need follow-up work to be done.
Thank you. We're now off the list.
I want to go ahead, so...
All right.
Good evening, everyone, and congratulations to the newly-elected members of the town council. My name is Bernie Bragan, and I no longer reside in Edison, but I have, since December 9th, been appointed as the school superintendent. It's a job that I'm really excited to do, and I'm thrilled to be back in Edison and be a part of the community, the school community, as well as the overall township community. I just want to extend an invitation to each of you, and as fellow representatives of the public, I look forward to us working together and doing everything in our power to best serve the students and the children of this community. Please feel free to reach out to me at any time, any questions, concerns you may have regarding the school's education, transportation issues, anything that relates to the town and the school. And if I could ever help you personally, and anything that you need to do, or initiatives that you have for the town, please feel free to reach out to me, and I really look forward for us to work together in creating an environment of collaboration to best serve the members of our community here and our community at large. So thank you for the time for me to say a few words.
Thank you. Counsel President, Mr. Bragan, I'm definitely going to take advantage of why you're here for a moment, okay?
Darn.
And thank you for serving, and we're certain this council's proud to have an Edison resident from the past to be here, knowing the community. So congratulations, and we look forward to working with you. It's also great to hear so many council members, including our council president, Joyce Ship Freeman, wants to see a collaboration, and I thank her for that. I can guarantee you, she's going to make that happen. And I can guarantee she's going to make that happen. That's for sure. Jackson Avenue, Herbert Hoover. I know there's a traffic pattern. If there's a time we can meet during the school hours, when the buses come down and the parents... There's just a crossover of a lot of parents wanting to pick up and pull over at the same time, the ingress and egress of the circulation. I believe the board has done some work on it, but the actual what happened at the aftermath is still... I'm getting some complaints over there of how many loop through and how they leave. So I'd love you to look into it.
Yeah, absolutely. And as a former Hoover Hornet back in the '70s, that road has not gotten any wider in those days, and I could definitely see... We actually had conversations about that, that drop-off and pickup, that road is only so wide.
Yes.
And we need to do the best we can to mitigate that traffic, and I will absolutely look into it and work with Mr. McGrath, I think is the principal there, and do whatever we can to support that.
It could be just a timing thing, and I'm a Hoover Hornet. I was never a TJ fan.
Once a Hornet, always a Hornet.
I am. TJ was my rival, but they had some good wrestlers.
Indeed. Anytime, and I will definitely look into that. Again, to do what we can with the schools and during the arrival and dismissal times, it does put a burden on the surrounding areas for traffic, and if there's something we could do to help mitigate that for the town, we will definitely work with you.
And at the same time, we have the restaurant there, and they have certain days with celebration. But now they've also turned into a daddy daycare during the day, and they have trucks there now. So I'm having a huge issue.
Not to mention Camelot. Oh, wait, did I say that out loud?
No problem. You got that.
I also just want to thank you for coming. I think it speaks volume that you're here. It's almost 8 o'clock at night, you as well as the Assistant Superintendent, Ms. Balkowski. Thank you so much for showing up. It shows your dedication, not just for, you know, your day job, but showing that you're going out of your way to put in so much amount of effort and time and working to really help our whole school system. So thank you very much for showing up.
Thank you, and I plan to be a regular here as much as I can, and we're in this together. Thank you.
Thank you. And I also see a board president back there, Ralph Erico. Board head. So we're starting off really well this year. All right? Next.
Council President, I think it's a great suggestion. We nominate Sam Jersey to be at every school board meeting.
I guess you, Crystal.
Crystal, 14 Fox Road. Before I start off with this, did we talk about R-19?
Yes.
Oh, so we already...
It's already approved.
Oh, I only... Because I only heard three things, and...
The rest was on the consent agenda. Everything else was approved.
Okay. After you approve something, or... And I'm just asking because I'm learning right now. Are we allowed to have public comments on the resolutions?
If you want to. Just to be clear, sir, you and I have gone over this a few times, but let me just...
No, no, I mean...
Sir, I'm going to respect your ability to speak. I'm asking you to respect mine. So I'm just want to, just so we're clear as to what oral petitions and remarks are, it is any person may address the council on any matter of which the council has jurisdiction, provided, however, the preference shall be given to those who are on the list. So if it's something that the council has jurisdiction, i.e. if they've already... If they've worked on... Let me finish, sir. If they've worked on it and we've adopted a resolution, but you still think the council should know something about it, then please give the council your thoughts on it.
No.
But please, sir, but please do not go off into what you think about elected officials either outside...
Sir, I'm just trying to learn.
Sir, let me finish.
Can you restart my time? Because I'm talking about number seven. I'm not talking about oral petitions and remarks.
We've gone over this a few times, sir, and we're going to ask you to be respectful and speak to issues over which this court, this council's jurisdiction...
I have been.
And with those as the ground rules, please move forward, sir.
What I'm asking is the public comment on the resolutions, number seven, not number nine, oral petitions and remarks. Are we allowed to public comment after you vote for...
You could have spoken an hour ago, but you could speak on that issue right now if you cared to. Mr. Contas.
Forget it. I want to congratulate...
Mr. Contas.
Excuse me?
Council President?
Yes.
To Mr. Contas, I believe, you know, Mr. Northgrave was just trying to clarify for you. At seven, at the seventh time right there, at number seven...
Yes, sir.
That's when you can talk about the resolutions. Now that we've passed them, you've missed your time to convince us not to vote on them. Now that they've been voted on, you're past the convincing part. They're already approved, but you can still comment, is what Mr. Northgrave was just trying to share with you.
All right.
And he was also just trying to keep you in your lane of what jurisdiction is. So we welcome your interest, and I'm glad you want to learn a little more because... But you have to understand, it's not that we can favor some of the comments you make all the time, and it's been tiring.
Sir, all right. You guys are the ones making the comments now.
Excuse me, sir. Don't become frustrated.
I understand.
If you have a comment, he said to you plainly, if you have a comment on it, you can still comment on number seven. I don't want you to feel frustrated. I don't want you to feel like you're not being...
No, I'm just... I'll just get on to what I'm supposed to talk about. How much more time do I have left, Marlena? Three minutes? All right. I just want to thank, congratulate Ms. Joyce Shipman-Freeman as president, Mr. Brescher as vice president. I like you guys. Good job on the property tax reform package. The average Topgolf facility earns $24 million a year. So I don't know how much they pay in taxes now. They should pay more. The Water Board is breaking the sunshine law by holding private meetings, not allowing the public to see or hear what's going on, and not telling the public the days they meet. President to the town clerk, can that be fixed? Would you guys make the Water Board meetings public? Or do I ask Ms. Ruane that?
Sir, there's no violation of the Water Board. If you have other comments, please share them. And if you feel there is, then you're certainly... There are certainly avenues available for you to contest that.
Okay. I haven't been here for a while. I haven't been to some meetings. To Council President, to Joshi, you promised to tell us the fingerprints on December 10, and when I went... Did you give us the name yet while I wasn't here? Or are we still waiting to hear the name of the guy with the fingerprints?
That's still under federal jurisdiction. We can't comment on that at this time.
All right. That's it. Oh, one more thing. Northgrave, you said you're the township attorney. I understand you can't give me any legal advice, but because you're the township attorney, and I'm also a member of the township, doesn't that make you my attorney too, sir?
No, sir.
Not at all?
Not at all.
I have more things to say, but I just got frustrated. I'd rather not speak anymore.
You're welcome to come back up again after everybody has spoken. That's it?
Council President, can I just say something?
Can we close the public portion here now?
Right. Not the public portion.
Sorry. Do you mind if I... Council President? Motion to close the public portion?
So moved. Second.
Second.
All right. Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Now?
Council President, I was asked by people in the public, and there were quite a few, why... Well, I voted no for council president and for vice president. And as opposed to going through the 40 text messages that I got, I just told everybody I'll just explain it. Planet simple was that, as a council person, I believe in communication. I heard the speeches, and people talked about communication. Truth of the matter was, neither the president nor the vice president asked me for their vote. Nobody placed that call to me. So it was just a matter of just saying, you know, don't take the vote for granted. You need to explain yourself, and everybody needs to be held accountable to what their questions and answers are. So it was strictly not based upon, you know, either one of you. I know you very well. Joyce, I actually walked with. But it was just based upon the fact that I wasn't asked for my vote, and no one contacted me. Now, with that, I had... I noticed that we had the applications for the library, and I'd like to just request that when those applications come in, if somehow they could all go to the clerk's office where they could be stamped, so we know when they came in. Because I know there was a little confusion. Somebody turned them in the day before. Maybe the mayor wasn't around that day, so he didn't get to review some of them. I don't know. But this way, at least, we know what transpires and led to those decisions. The other item I have is I was listening to Councilman Joshi the other day on our legal bills and spending excessive amounts of money on legal bills. And then I heard the administration explaining how we do averages to kind of come up with engineering contracts and that. And what I'd asked for, I guess, moving forward is, is here's the legal bill for the one firm, and I'd like to pass this down to all my councilmen, so you have a copy, that explains what we spend on legal bills and what we initially approve. Where we initially approve, let's say, $300,000, we spend $600,000 in legal bills. Now, I believe that on a monthly basis, this all gets approved, probably, like I heard my councilman Patel say that we see that. But I'd like the public to see it upfront. So when Mr. Coyle said at the last meeting, we're approving $1 million in professional services, maybe it should have been $1,000,000.5 to be an actual number. And again, this all goes back to the budget, where during this difficult time, when I think we're going to have a budget that will be higher than it was last year, you know, I think we want to hold everybody accountable here and have certain parameters that we work within. So if we're going to do an average for the law firms, if we can just do that average and then make that for that year, then we can discuss it. Because maybe if all my council colleagues knew that it was almost twice as high, we might have went down a different road with that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the last, but not least, normally, if somebody tells you in advance that you're not ready to be a leader, you or your VP, you normally say, well, that's a vote we will